Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City of Fairfield Planning Commission of September 23rd, 2020. May we please have the roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Evans?
Present.
Commissioner Cruzon?
Here.
Commissioner Childs?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Matthews?
Here.
Commissioner Wesley?
Here.
Commissioner Cohen is absent this evening. And Commissioner Wood?
Here.
Commissioner Evans, can we have you lead the pledge? Did I pick on you last time, too? Good. Please, lead us. You're a good leader. With regard to public comments, there are speaker cards in the lobby area that must be filled out by anyone, including the applicant, if you would like to speak on an item. Speakers may address items on this agenda at any time the item is considered. Please pass the card up to us prior to the time for public comments on the item. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the commission. Comments are also being taken by email. Email comments will be submitted at any time during the meeting up to the close of the comment period, or should I say, they should be received any time through the close of the comment period or the public hearing for the item. During the comment period, forehearing staff will read each comment received for up to three minutes, but please get them in early as they may take a minute to come through. To submit a comment, please send an email to the following address: planning@fairfield.ca.gov. Planning spelled P-A-N-N-I-N-G. Please indicate the agenda item for which you are providing comment. Again, the email address for comment is planning@fairfield.gov. Next item is... Pardon me?
Yeah, it's planning.ca.gov.
Planning.ca.gov. Next is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move.
Commissioner Matthews make a motion?
I second.
Second? All in favor?
Yeah.
Oh, roll call, that's right.
We need to take a roll call vote for that because we have somebody calling in tonight. So Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruzon?
Yes.
Commissioner Childs?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Matthews?
Yes.
Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Commissioner Cohen is absent. And Commissioner Wood?
Yes. Approval of the meeting of the minutes of August 12th. Next is approval of the August 12th Planning Commission meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the August 12th meeting?
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes as submitted. Feinstein, will you call the roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruzon?
Yes.
Commissioner Childs?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Matthews?
Yes.
Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Commissioner Cohen is absent. And Commissioner Wood?
Yes. Public comments. This is a time for the public to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Items from the public that are not part of the agenda will be taken under consideration without discussion or action by the commission except as authorized by law and may be referred to staff. I will now open the public comment period. I do not have any speaker cards for public comment. Mr. Feinstein, have we received any email public comments?
I do not have any.
With that, I will close the public comment period. Scheduled matters. The next item on the agenda is scheduled matter. For each agendized item, there will be a presentation by city staff for items that involve application requests. I will ask the applicant to address the Planning Commission if they so desire. Then I will open the public hearing and call out the names of members of the public who have filled out speaker cards. Come forward to the podium, speak for up to three minutes. Staff will then read any emailed comments received during the meeting. I will close the public hearing after all comments have been provided and after all questions regarding the testimony during the public hearing have been answered. After the public hearing is closed, the Planning Commission will deliberate on the item and may have additional questions of staff. Cannot take additional testimony or questions from the public after the hearing has been closed. Mission will then vote on the item. Item A, Seven Flags Car Wash Electronic Message Board. This item is a public hearing on the quest mark. Barber of fast signs for sign permit SN 2020-27 to install a monument sign with electronic message board for the Seven Flags Car Wash at 12006 Texas Street. Item was continued from the last commission just so that we can get an appropriate resolution. So, quick, Ms. Noel, do you have a short presentation?
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, Project Quest, our last. As a recap, project quest for Six Flags Car Wash Electronic Message Board, Seven Flags. At our last meeting, staff recommended denial of this sign. Record it and directed staff to return with resolution to approve the electronic board, which brings us to today. Reminder, that's the proposed sign. So, our staff recommendation for this project to adopt Resolution 2020-13 approving the request for a monument sign with an electronic message board as part of the following application for sign permit SN 2020-027.
Okay, I have no speaker cards. I have nobody wishing to speak. So, I will open the public hearing. No speakers, nobody presenting. I will close the public hearing. Any discussion or issues by the commission? Hearing done, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2020-13 pertaining to item A, sign permit SN 2020-027.
I move we adopt Resolution Number 2020-13.
There has been a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Commissioner Childs has a second. The motion, is there any discussion? Not, Mr. Feinstein, will you conduct the roll call vote?
Yes, Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruzon?
Yes.
Commissioner Childs?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Matthews?
Yes.
Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Commissioner Cohen is absent. And Commissioner Wood?
Item B, SB 743, implementation, SEQA, transportation analysis through vehicles, vehicle miles traveled. So, this is a public hearing on the quest of the City of Fairfield recommending the City adopt the City of Fairfield Senate Bill 743 implementation procedures and the threshold of significance and mitigation measures for vehicle miles traveled, VMT, as required by the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, guidelines implementing SB 743 addressing environmental review of transportation impacts under SEQA. Mr. Miller, you may proceed.
Thank you, members of the commission and the chairman. I have a brief introductory presentation on this topic. As the title suggests, as of July 1st, 2020, state law and the associated guidelines implementing state law change how lead agencies review transportation impacts under SEQA. And we've been working with our consultant team, Aaron Vaca from DKS Engineering is here tonight, to develop new standards and guidelines and mitigation measures implementing the regulations and guidelines. Tonight, you will be recommended to counsel this new approach, which is consistent with and comprised with the state law and the associated guidelines. Just a brief introduction to the California Environmental Quality Act. This is the act that requires all local governments and lead agencies to review the potential impacts of a project on the environment, to disclose those impacts to the public and decision makers, and to address and mitigate those impacts that have been defined as significant under the California Environmental Quality Act. One of those impacts, one of those topic areas, so to speak, is transportation impacts. Currently, or I should say in the past, since we are now past July 1st, 2020, transportation impacts were assessed based on a level of service, which is an analysis of how a project impacts delay at key intersections in the vicinity of the project area or within the scope or general area of the project area. Many of the veteran planning commissioners have heard the term LOSD, Level of Service D, Level of Service A. That represents how long a typical vehicle will sit at an intersection during a traffic signal cycle. That's now changing. Senate Bill 743 requires a new approach to environmental review for transportation impacts. There are several state goals associated with this new approach to environmental review. They want to encourage infill development. They want to encourage active transportation, and there's a goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. This whole program is basically tied to the Climate Action Plan and climate mitigation goals of the state. This new approach, which has been adopted, which is adopted subject to SB 743 and the subsequent guidelines developed by the state, is vehicle miles traveled. This replaces our level of service review for transportation impacts. It basically measures the number of trips and total distance between the origin and destination, such as, for example, a driver leaving his residence and going to his place of employment, or going to the local store, or even in some cases, leaving the area. The goal, the basic goal of the VMT program and VMT mitigation, and in the future to a large extent, transportation planning, is to actually reduce total trips and steer development into areas that require less vehicle travel or offer alternative modes, such as walking, cycling, public transportation even. So, the goal is to reduce vehicle miles traveled, which subsequently will also reduce greenhouse gas emissions and also meet other state goals that I discussed. The program tonight, the city needs to adopt new standards and thresholds to implement the VMT requirement and SEQA review. This is a state mandate. We do not have a choice but to adopt the VMT standard for our transportation review in the future, or now, actually. We retain DKS associates, as I mentioned earlier, and Aaron Vaca of DKS will now review our proposed program and some of the science and analysis that went behind it. There we go. All right, Aaron?
Thank you, Brian, and good evening, everyone. So, this is what I'm going to talk about tonight, give a little background, and then we'll get into the specific recommendations that we're making for the City of Fairfield, finally talk about the next steps. So, some of the background material has already been covered, so I'll try to go through these first slides fairly quickly. But again, this is the legislative and regulatory timeline that we're dealing with here. So, SB 743 was actually signed back in 2013. 2018, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research published technical guidance that many jurisdictions are relying heavily on as direction for how to implement this law. And they also made recommendations to the Natural Resources Agency about amending the SEQA guidelines, which are also part of the public code. So, those updated or amended SEQA guidelines were adopted in December of 2019, and as Brian mentioned, as of July 1st of this year, local authorities may no longer use delay-based measures, measures of automobile delay, to measure transportation impacts under SEQA. Here's another slide on the level of service concept. It just illustrates in a little more detail what we're talking about. Level of Service A is good, just like the letter grades in school, with very minimal delay. And for a signalized intersection, the measure is actually based on the average delay per vehicle in getting through that intersection. The City of Fairfield does maintain standards for how it would like to see its intersections and streets operate. Those are listed there on the slide. And I'll just point out that level of service is typically measured on a peak hour basis, what's the delay like during the morning or afternoon peak periods, or peak hours. And that's the case for Fairfield, where it's the PMP. In contrast, the concept of vehicle miles traveled is really looking at an average daily distance traveled on a per capita or per land use unit basis. So, this diagram goes into a little more detail on what are we talking about here, where somebody might drive to drop their kid off at school on the way to work, and then maybe make some errands from work, and on the way home, make a stop. And the total sum of all those legs or distances is the vehicle miles traveled. That could be associated with that residential location in this illustration. The next few slides I borrowed from our friends at OPR, because I thought they give a good explanation of kind of the impetus for this law. So, this slide shows analysis of an infill development, as you see, that would be in an urban core type of location, a downtown, versus analysis of development that would be out in the suburban fringe, maybe on a greenfield type of development site. So, what happens is the infill development generates relatively little VMT or travel onto the street network, but because it's already in a dense location, you know, it will get blamed for level of service impacts in the project vicinity. That becomes an impediment to this kind of project. Whereas in contrast, if you're building on a brand new site, somewhere out on the edge of the city, it's going to generate, it's likely to generate much more vehicle miles traveled. And that's because the destinations are not as close, opportunities for shopping and work and so forth are not as close, there's probably not as good transit service located nearby, so people need to drive more and are likely to drive more. However, in contrast to the infill development, in this case, it might impact only one intersection, and maybe the development puts in a traffic signal and they're done. So, it's, I just thought these were a good series of slides, because I think they really illustrate kind of the impetus for the change in the regulation and the legislation. Moving on from that, Brian has already mentioned about SEQA, but the, again, some of the terminology here, mitigation refers to specific measures to avoid or reduce impacts below a threshold of significance. So, each local agency has to determine what those thresholds of significance are going to be for their jurisdiction. So, in the past, it was typically a level of service type of threshold, where it would be Level of Service D, or any project adding more than X number of seconds delay, that would be considered an impact, had to be mitigated. And under the new regulatory system, it will be vehicle miles traveled. So, what I'm presenting today is really a recommendation, some work that was done for Fairfield to define its threshold of significance. The next few slides, I just want to quickly summarize this guidance that was issued by the Office of Planning and Research. Again, this has been very heavily relied upon by most jurisdictions throughout the state in determining how to apply these regulations. So, what OPR recommends is that for residential and employment projects, the VMT impacts be assessed on a, using what is called a VMT efficiency metric, so on a per capita or per employee basis. So, we're looking at the, you know, how much VMT does a project generate relative to other projects of that type, other residential uses or other employment. OPR recommends a net VMP impact approach for retail and most other land uses. So, what is the total VMT over the area that the project might have impact with the project and without? And any increase in that would be an impact. And then again, for infrastructure projects, similar, a net VMT impact. Is this transportation infrastructure project going to generate, you know, even one vehicle mile travel more than the no-project condition? So, those are the recommendations, and that's what we're pretty much following for the City of Fairfield. The other main category of recommendations that we want to consider here are methods for screening projects. And what screening means is that you can make a presumption that it will have a less-than-significant impact right off the bat, so that no formal or further VMT analysis would be required. And so, quickly, those categories would consist of projects that are within a half-mile of a high-quality transit stop or corridor, and there's a specific definition of high-quality transit in the public code that we are using. Small projects that generate fewer than 110 daily trips, and that's basically, that's related to a categorical exemption that already exists for expansion of existing uses. Projects that consist of local-serving retail, and it's suggested that a 50,000-square-foot might be a good kind of criterion for that. And there, the reasoning is that adding local-serving retail is actually going to reduce VMT, people don't need to drive, if they can maybe drive shorter distances to access certain goods and services. The next category would be projects consisting of 100% affordable housing. And there, the caveat is, it's recommended that those sites would have good transit service to make this screening call. And then the final category of screening would be projects located in low-VMT areas. And that is based on the reasoning that if you can show that a certain area of your city is already generating relatively low levels of VMT, you can assume that another project in that location is going to have similar characteristics. It can be presumed less-than-significant. So, we're going to go into more detail on these in the upcoming slides, but this is what OPR recommends for that. And now, we'll get into the more specific recommendations for the City of Fairfield. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. This slide talks about travel demand models. I only bring this up because this is the type of tool that's typically used to measure and model of vehicle miles traveled and project impacts. And I don't be alarmed by all the detail on the slide, I just want to say that, you know, typically, the input is either employment, population, units of land use, and then on the other end of the model, it will spit out a list of all the trips that are made and the routes that are taken, and therefore, VMT. The other concept I wanted to mention here was the transportation analysis zones, because this will be important when I talk about the screening maps. So, the travel models typically have to do a, divide the city into different sort of sections, and then there's a old zones, and then there's a centroid, and then that's kind of the rough model, you know, instead of modeling every single parcel and local street, it's a more abstract model of all the transportation network. So, the city does maintain a travel demand model, and it's a three-step model, which means it's only measuring, it's only modeling vehicle travel, there's no mode choice component. But this is something that the city has maintained for 10 years now, and will continue to use some form of it going forward. And it does take land use as its inputs. And the final point about your travel demand model that I wanted to make is, in addition to the City of Fairfield, it covers Soon and then some unincorporated areas as well. So, for the SB 743 project, we started with the basic model, and we did some development to it, make it suitable for this purpose. First, we worked with the planning department to develop a 2020 land use scenario to try to get all the land uses as current and up-to-date as possible. We made some adjustments to the model so that it can account for the VMT that occurs actually outside the city, the model boundaries. That's another very specific piece of direction from OPR that for SEQA VMT analysis, really needs to account for all the VMT, even if it does not occur within your jurisdiction. So, we use the California statewide travel model for that purpose. And then finally, we developed some procedures to tabulate all the VMT associated with each land use type for each TAS, and then we can use that information to calculate the average for the city as a whole. So, this is the really important results. You can see in the, the first column is the average VMT per land use unit, and that's as measured over the entire model area. So, we could have taken just the City of Fairfield TAS, but that would have given us a more restrictive threshold, and there is precedent and guidance for using a somewhat expanded area. Ideally, we could have compared it to a county-wide average, but we didn't have that information. So, we developed averages, as you can see there, per dwelling unit for single and multifamily residential land uses and per thousand square feet of office land use. So, this covers the residential and employment uses that OPR recommends that you use a VMT efficiency metric to find a threshold. I guess one point I did not make when I'm talking about the OPR is, the recommended threshold for presumption of less-than-significant impacts is 85% of the existing average. So, it can't, not only below average, but only 85% of the average. So, that's what that middle column is there. And those series of numbers are what projects need to be either screened out or come in below that level to be considered to have a less-than-significant impact. And then for comparison purposes, using some factors from the census, unemployment density factors, I'm showing the comparable numbers on a per capita and employee basis in the As far as recommended screening criteria, again, we're pretty much following the OPR recommendations. Affordable housing projects, local-serving retail up to 50,000 square feet. I just note about retail, even a project that was larger than 50,000 square feet could potentially be cleared. There's one study I've seen of a Target in Davis where it was shown that it could actually reduce VMT, although it is a big box store because of the area that it's drawing its customer base from, that people wouldn't have to drive so far to get to a Target. So, that's the kind of analysis that might need to be done going forward on these really large projects, if any. We've also interpreted the 50,000-square-feet to be per establishment, so there may be a shopping center that has, you know, an anchor type of store and then some smaller spaces, but as long as none of them are larger than 50,000 individually, that could potentially be screened out. There's the last three items I'm going to talk about in a little more detail in the following slides, but they do include small projects, projects in proximity to high-quality transit, and the location in low-VMT areas. Talk a little more about small projects. This gives you an idea of just how small the project would have to be, be screened on this criterion. And here, we're using the trip generation rates from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, it's kind of an standard, and that gives you an idea of sort of size thresholds here for projects that would be expected to generate fewer than 110 daily trips. Then we've developed a map that shows all the parcels that are within a half-mile of your rail stations and the Fairfield Transit Center. And again, we're interpreting the, there's a requirement for a 15-minute frequency during the peak commute periods, and we believe that can be interpreted to be in, in total, all lines serving that spot and not any individual bus line, for example, having that frequency. So using those criteria, you can see there's a number of parcels that are within a half-mile. And then we get to the screening maps. So this is the concept of presumption of low VMT based on the location of a project. So these are the transportation analysis zones from your model, and we've color-coded them by the VMT per land use unit. So the zones in green are those that are under the threshold, or up to 85% of average VMT per unit. The zones in yellow are greater than that threshold, but no greater than the average. And then the red zones are above the average VMT generation rate. So the green ones would not require, any projects located in those areas would not require a VMT analysis. Projects located in the yellow zones would require an analysis, but are probably more easily mitigated. And then the most outlying zones in red would be the ones that would potentially be more difficult to mitigate any impact that were identified. So this is what the map looks like for the multifamily residential land use, and then the office land use. And then the gray zones, the, either the land use zoning was not applicable, or it's like, you notice the Air Force Base there is not, not really applicable either. And then I just wanted to mention a little bit about transportation infrastructure projects, probably more of concern to Public Works, but in addition to land use projects, transportation projects themselves need to be evaluated for potential VMP impact. Most of the types of the projects that the city will be undertaking would be exempt or can be presumed to have less-than-significant VMP impact. It's really only when a project is adding significant new through lane, vehicle lane capacity that this has to be looked at. So what will the approach be for those projects that are not able to be screened out by one of the methods that we discussed? Well, they will need to have a VMT analysis done, and that will probably require the project proponent and/or their consultant to use your travel demand model and some spreadsheet tools and other scripts that we've developed to do the analysis and identify whether there will be an impact or not to their project. Retail, again, in some cases, that may be more of a market area study, and so they'll have to show if their project has a net impact or not. We think medical uses could take a similar approach to the retail analysis for a clinic or something that's going to be closer to the patients it serves that could potentially not have a significant impact versus a more regional hospital or something. Industrial uses is an interesting question, because the SEQA guidelines specify that it is passenger VMT and light-duty vehicle VMT that is under consideration here. So analysis of industrial projects needs to focus on that part of it. So heavy-duty truck traffic would not be a consideration, although that might trigger some other SEQA impacts, like noise or air quality or something, depending on the project. But the VMT analysis would, should focus on light duty. So if customer vehicles would be the major component of an industrial project, then you can perhaps analyze it, the net approach, like a retail. If employees are the major component of travel to an industrial site, then you can look at the office threshold per employee, try to determine if there's an impact. So what about those projects that are not screened, do the analysis, and are showing that they have a VMT impact? Well, we've also looked at mitigation measures. And here, one of the key reference documents that, again, everybody is referring to is a study that was done by the Association of Air Pollution Control Officers, and this reference is about 10 years old at this point. There's a few more sources that we cite in our technical memorandum on this topic, but we picked out some of the documented mitigation measures that ranges of effectiveness, might be most applicable to Fairfield. And as you can see, the most effective ones tend to be the ones that are a little bit harder to implement, so they involve changing the project land use, maybe, density, adding multiple uses, or integrating affordable housing. The neighborhood or site enhancements max out at about 2% effectiveness, but, you know, that could potentially get some projects over the threshold, and that would be things like traffic calming, pedestrian improvements, adding bike parking. Parking charges can be effective as well, or travel demand management programs. I just wanted to touch on the topic of retention of a level of service as a local policy. So because of this regulatory change, does that mean that the city no longer can require projects to look at level of service impacts? No, that is not the case. You can still retain a policy on level of service as a local policy, it's just not going to be considered as an impact under SEQA or any environmental document. So just to review the general plan, policy exists, level of service D for arterial streets, and C for collectors, and B for local streets. So we have worked with Public Works and updated the transportation impact requirement guidelines to reflect this change and distinguish, there's kind of two tracks of analysis. Local transportation analysis that will look at level of service, and then, as well as site circulation and topics of that nature, and SEQA VMT analysis. And I know this is not terribly legible, I could not figure out how to make it appear in a portrait format, but this is a flowchart from our report. Hopefully, you have that in your package to examine in more detail, and it just kind of shows the thought process of a project, walking through analyzing what types of analysis to be done. So there's actually a threshold for peak-hour trips that triggers more extensive local transportation analysis requirements, so that's up at the top, yellow here, oh, and, you know, that uses pretty standard trip generation calculations. Project proponents will probably go to the ITE trip generation rates. That will define what level of local analysis is required. Then you look at the daily project trips, is it less than or greater than 110? Less than that, project may be presumed less-than-significant. Doesn't mean that criteria, you can go down through the project description, is it affordable housing, is it local-serving retail? Yes, no? Then you look at the screening maps, is the project located within a half-mile of high-quality transit? Yes, no? Is it located in a low-VMT area? Yes or no? So if it fails all the screening kind of tests, then it will require a VMT impact So that's kind of the product, the process and the thresholds that we're recommending. The next steps will be for the city council to adopt the baselines and thresholds of significance, and for the screening and analysis procedures will then be applied in any upcoming land use applications. And then you do have a general plan update on the horizon as well. So VMT is something that will need to be considered during that process. In addition to local, to individual land use projects needing to have a VMT analysis, planning documents will also require that. That will be an important issue to consider. And that's all I had, so I'm happy to take any questions or discussion.
In addition to Aaron, we also have Garland Wong, our transportation engineer, who can perhaps provide some additional insights as needed to answer your questions. It's a lot of information, and, but I think we have a good approach here that's been developed by the consultant team, so we're available for any concerns or questions. Oh, of course. To make the formal recommendation is to adopt the resolution to recommend to the city council that we adopt the SB 743 and vehicle miles travel policy for the city of Fairfield, which includes the thresholds, the analysis process, a list of mitigation measures, which I might point out are not exhausted by, they're not, the only mitigation measures are just suggested mitigation measures. So that's the recommendation that we're asking for you, for you to act on tonight.
Okay, I don't have any speakers on this item. I've got some questions, so I will open the public hearing and close the public hearing, and then discussion from the commissioners, Commissioner Matthews.
And to be, to be clear, I don't have any email comments either.
So about a year ago, we had a long discussion in the meeting about developments along Business Center Drive, you know, the new apartment complex and warehouses and so on. Can you, and this, you may not be able to say off the cuff, but is there any way to compare how this analysis would look versus the LOS approach that we reviewed last year?
I'll start, and then. As some of the maps, as you may have seen on some of the maps, that Business Center Drive area is a red zone. So large projects that cannot be screened under the various criteria, screening criteria that we've discussed tonight, will have to do a VMT analysis. Does that mean that we can never build additional projects along Business Center Drive? Not necessarily. There are mitigation measures that Aaron covered, there are, there are things that can be done to reduce the VMT. For example, not just speaking completely off the cuff here, if a residential project were to include local-serving retail, that could be a way of reducing total VMT, because you now have local-serving retail that reduces total VMT in the area. That's going to be one of the more interesting areas, and it will require a lot of work from the consultant, from consultants and staff to address those issues. One approach, and it's more a long-term approach that'll come out of the general plan, is in our train station-specific plan, although VMT was only on the horizon at the time, the train station-specific plan very explicitly included policy language and guidance and development patterns, et cetera, designed to do what we're talking about here, reducing total vehicle miles generated. As we look at the upcoming general plan and the new development areas, we can use similar approaches or similar concepts in designing those areas and designing the standards for those areas, including if we make changes, for example, if we want to make changes to some of the areas in Cordelia or Green Valley, I mean, we could certainly look at those kinds of approaches as well in that area. That's not a clean answer, because it's something I think that we're going to, we're definitely going to have to analyze as projects come forward.
I don't know if you had anything to add, or? Yeah, and I actually have one other thing. Quite a bit of that land over there that has potential development is covered by a series of development agreements, and so we'd also look at whether or not those development agreements provide essentially some protections for the landowners, that their developments have essentially been guaranteed via development agreements.
Right, I get, I get all that, and I appreciate it, and it's a comprehensive presentation, and thank you, Aaron and Brian, for your work on this. But my real question is, there were a number of citizens that were very concerned about traffic based on those developments. And, you know, we, I think just on the traffic study was about an hour-long presentation by itself. Ultimately, it was approved and not considered to be, I may be wrong with this, but it was either mitigated or not significant enough of an issue under the LOS. My question is, would that same conclusion have been reached under the VMT approach?
And I don't know if we can answer that without looking at, at the specifics of the VMT analysis. I will point out, though, that as Aaron made clear, and the staff report also addressed, we're not eliminating LOS issues completely as part of our review of a project. We have a general plan policy for level of service, and we'll continue to look at needed transportation mitigation measures associated with projects and the traffic generated by those projects. The key thing here is, again, the state policy is that we can't use LOS by itself as a transportation impact under California Environmental Quality Act to find a project unfeasible. That doesn't mean that they're, that we're completely ignoring LOS in the future, and those discussions will, I'm sure, continue, using the, even using the same LOS language or LOS discussion, but also with a VMT thrown in as well.
Yeah, and I think, so as Brian mentioned, LOS, until our general plan is amended to eliminate LOS, we'll still look at that as an issue, so those issues will still come into play. I think what will eventually, you know, what you might find is that a, as far as SEQA is concerned, California Environmental Quality Act and complying with that, you may need to include additional or different mitigation measures to ensure that those projects do not have a significant effect on the environment. So instead of a mitigation measure that says improve the operations at an intersection, you might have mitigations that create better connectivity over to the retail areas, potentially increase density, affordability, those kinds of things introduced as a mitigation measure that you might not have seen before in order to qualify, in order to satisfy the California Environmental Quality Act.
Yeah. All those things that Dave mentioned were also, I might point out, not to toot our own horn, were also considered during development of the train station-specific plan, the connectivity, the access to local-serving retail, the mix of land uses, so.
But let me just try to phrase it one last time, then I'll move on and let others ask a question. It's my perception that VMT is more stringent than LOS. Is that a correct perception?
That's not always the case. It's, that's an interesting question, and it's not, I don't think it's always more stringent, because there are, for some projects, I would argue, VMT is less stringent perhaps than LOS in the sense that, especially for infill projects. Because you're not, because as was pointed out in Aaron's presentation, infill projects may appear to have more LOS impacts, but they actually introduce less traffic overall into the network. So the VMT will actually facilitate development, infill development in, say, the heart of Fairfield area, or even in like the North Texas Street area.
Okay, got it.
It's William, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So a couple of things. One, I would like to know, like, these, so in Sacramento, on a day, you mentioned this statewide, so we really have to pretty much, on that being, it's been mentioned.
Commissioner Wesley, you're very garbled. I don't know, I think we're all having trouble hearing you, so maybe if you slow down just a bit, it might come through better.
Are you hearing an echo?
No, it was just garbled, so now we're hearing you, so go ahead.
So, apparently, VMP is a law- So, apparently, V M T, the law of the land in terms of the state, in terms of considering a project, in terms of meeting the SEQA requirements, we won't be able to use LOS to do that. And I think, back I mentioned, that other municipalities, and he didn't say cities, but I would assume major, major concentration places like LA, San Jose, Sacramento, San Francisco, had some feedback in this plan. Here's my thought, and again, we have to do what we have to do to get it. But my thought is this, if we're in Fairfield or outlying areas, right, V M T just means, okay, you're going to travel eight miles. But there are days in Fairfield where you'll travel eight miles and it'll be 30 minutes. There are days in San Francisco, travel eight miles is an hour and a half. So vehicle miles traveled is only eight miles, but level of service is, I have waited an hour to get placed. And so they sort of fly against each other, and since the V M T is the law of the land and it's statewide, it's just sort of interesting, because if we're saying the primary impetus for this type of thing was the consideration of streethouse gaps and et cetera, if I'm sitting in traffic an hour and a half with an approved V M T in San Francisco to go an hour and a half for eight miles, seems like a defeat from process if we don't take LOS into consideration.
Yes, I mean, you can't deny the reality of what you're saying. I mean, that it takes a lot longer to drive eight miles in San Francisco than it does in Fairfield. I think, I can't speak for the state necessarily, but the state would, but I will, and the state would argue that the difference is, in San Francisco, you have other options, walking, cycling, public transit in the post or pre-COVID era. In Fairfield, you don't. So the very pattern of development in San Francisco at least encourages or facilitates less vehicle miles traveled overall than similar amounts or levels of development in Fairfield. So their goal, the state's goal, is for us to begin to encourage the infill development, to encourage the densification, the more of a mix of land uses, et cetera, to begin to take advantage of some of the same things that a San Francisco resident who doesn't have to drive eight miles necessarily every day would.
Understood.
Yeah, I'm not sure the answer is your question, but I think that's the policy thinking behind the state legislation.
That was a great answer. That answers a great part of it. But another part of that is some of the feedback, if you have it, from some of the other municipalities. What did San Francisco, what did LA say, any idea, when this was rolled out?
Well, I mean, the city certainly has provided feedback in the past, and other suburban jurisdictions have certainly provided feedback, whether it overcomes an urban-centric approach or viewpoint, and whether it overcomes overall state goals as far as encouraging the concentration and infill development. I mean, that's, that's an issue. I mean, we always comment on state policy issues like this, whether our voice is always heard as strongly as in Oakland or Sacramento or San Francisco. I mean, I think you can guess the answer to that.
Right, right. Okay. Well, that's all I have. Great presentation. Thanks, people.
Any other questions? Commissioner Evans?
Thank you for simplifying this for us. It was a great presentation. I have a two-part question, both parts of which are in regards to the developer and what this would, how this would impact an incoming developer. The first question is, if it gets, if the project gets to the point to where it requires a V M T analysis, who bears the cost of that? Is that something that the city pays for, the incoming developer pays for? And then the second part to that question is, who remedies, who is responsible for putting together a plan to remedy the situation? So say, like, someone wants to do an affordable housing project over off Business Center Drive, but there's no retail there, or there's no what's considered acceptable form of transportation. So then, is it on the developer to come up with a resolution for that, or is this something that they work with the city for? That's what I'm just trying to get a understanding of.
Yeah, so the analysis is typically handled, if we need an additional study, for example, or even the initial screening memo that our traffic engineer requires. Those are required to be prepared by the applicant or somebody that the applicant hires. So they typically hire a traffic consultant to do that, and it's no different than how we handle it today with the LOS method. The applicant would hire a traffic consultant to prepare an initial memo that they submit with their application, just to give us a sense of what the, what the traffic impacts might be and whether or not it requires more study. And if it does require more study, you know, even today, those costs are on the applicant. The city, though, has the responsibility for finalizing any reports and making determinations as to, the final determinations to which mitigation measures are required and how they are to be implemented. So typically, if there's a mitigation measure that's required in order to reduce an impact from a significant impact to a less-than-significant impact, the obligation to do that or the cost to do that do go to the applicant, whoever's developing that project. That's how it is today. That's how it would be even after this project or this law goes and has gone into effect.
And then they are also, because we're retaining the LOS, they are also responsible for that particular, however much that may cost additionally, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
In answer to your, to your second question, I think it's basically predicated on ensuring a better mix of land uses. The general plan process will certainly help do that. Specific plans that have been adopted for areas like the train station specific plan will certainly help do that as well. Ultimately, though, I mean, it's the landowners, the developers, consistent with the general plan and the zoning, who will determine what projects make sense from a market standpoint. We may not be able, for example, mandate retail on Business Center Drive to serve that new affordable housing project. We can look at, however, improvements to the local bicycle network. If it's an affordable housing project, we can encourage the provision of a childcare facility onsite, and that, those are examples of things that can reduce V M T, even though they're not necessarily providing retail to meet all life's needs in that immediate vicinity. It's going to be project-specific, it's going to be landowner-specific, but with the caveat that the general plan and the zoning do provide the guidance for that.
Yeah, and I think as we go through the update to the general plan, particularly with a V M T model in mind, we will look at the big picture. How do we, how do we, how do we address these issues in a more comprehensive way? How will the land use patterns that we propose and the improvements to better connect residential with services, jobs with retail, all of those kinds of things, as we put together that bigger program? I think that will lay out really a more programmatic set of mitigations and something that, I think, provides a greater amount of clarity for future development. And ideally, the environmental impact report that we do for the general plan ideally will screen out for us even more projects. But we'll get, we'll get to that as we go through the general plan, but do expect that V M T, creating complete neighborhoods and communities and better connecting things, I think all of this is just pushing us towards policies that address that. What we don't want is to overburden individual projects, and one of the best ways to do that is to create a more comprehensive program that everybody participates in.
So I have a question. Let's assume out development agreements, specific plans, and let's not look at mitigation quite yet. But say you have a good-sized, you know, 200, 300 unit housing development someplace where it's planned to be for a long time, say outside the train station area, that's not within the radius, so where it's screened out. So even though that area has long been planned for additional residential development, the developer's ready to improve and build roads, because they're going to have to put in the roads with their money. Am I correct in saying that since this, all other things being equal, without looking at mitigation, that even though this has been planned and structured and will plug into where we planned it to for a while, when you look at that, it's going to have, by V M T, it's going to have a significant impact? Is that generally correct?
Well, it's, it's going to depend on the specific project. But say it is, say it does have V M T. And, I mean, the first step, of course, is to look at what mitigation measures are available to mitigate that V M T impact. However, I mean, this is worst-case scenario, if you can't mitigate it all the way and the mitigation measures do, on a project-by-project basis, are limited in how much you can mitigate, then it becomes a policy decision of the city. Are the benefits overall of the project such that we go to the nuclear level, which is...
So we have to do a statement of overriding considerations?
Exactly. There may be cases where we have to go that far, if it's a project we really like and it has significant other benefits for the city, such as a major affordable housing project, a major employment generating use. I mean, there, there may be cases where we have to do the statement of overriding consideration.
So we still, at least we still, even though it's going to be significant, whereas under our level of service analysis, it wouldn't be significant because it's been planned for, we're going to have to adopt a statement of overriding considerations.
Yes, in some cases, that may be required. I don't know if Casey wants to amplify that or not.
Sure. And let me know if you can't hear me. I would just add that a project like that may have other significant impacts under SEQA, so there may already be a requirement to prepare an environmental impact report for any findings, or for any impacts that can't be mitigated to less-than-significance. City still has the option to move forward with that project. SEQA is an informational tool. It doesn't prevent the city from taking actions. But the city would have to adopt a statement of overriding considerations, again, as Brian said, finding that the benefits of the project outweigh its significant impact.
Okay, so that is a good point. I didn't even think of that. So my hypothetical project, whereas under prior analysis may not have triggered an E I R, all of a sudden V M T triggers an E I R.
Depending on its location, it's possible, yeah.
So it is conceivable that we have planned for this under the mitigation that the developer traditionally would have been prepared to employ a level of service, it's not significant, all of a sudden you look at it, V M T, okay. All of a sudden, we're looking at the expense and delay of an E I R?
It would be a focused E I R, so it would not be necessarily the full-blown, although even a focused E I R is more expensive than an NIGDAC, it would not be necessarily a full-blown massive E I R that you've seen on some projects.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure I was kind of looking at it in that way. And Commissioner Evans and Cruzen, I don't know if we're using a lot of jargon and getting beyond where you are, please, please, please ask questions, either in the meeting or later on as to what we're talking about, mitigated NIGDAC, E I R, focused E I R, et cetera. It's, understand, I've been doing this for, what, 11 years? And I also do land use planning in my practice. So anyway, with that note, I will conclude my questions. Do we have any more questions or issues from the commission?
I guess my only question would be, is it possible that we, what if we ended up with a situation where we had a blend, where we had some V M T and some LOS? Is that possible?
Well, our approach will be a blend. I mean, as Erin mentioned, as David mentioned, we're still going to be looking at the, at level of service. It's a local mandate. I mean, there are other transportation impacts, such as safety, et cetera, that we'll continue to look at. V M T is not the only thing we're going to look at in reviewing a project under this new regime. This is specifically and explicitly tied to transportation impacts under SEQA, and that by no means is it, are we saying we're not going to ever consider these other issues.
And it will be a blend at least as long as our existing general plan policies are in place. I think as a part of the upcoming general plan update, one of the things that we will discuss with the planning commission and the city council and the public is whether or not we wish to continue having that as a policy, so that that remains something that is a local set of importance, you know, policies of importance that we want to look at, or whether or not we want to eliminate those. So it'll be, it's a question for upcoming discussion.
Okay, with that, Commissioner Matthews?
Just to clarify, while this presentation has been very informative, we have no choice, right? It's a state law.
We have to do something, whether it's, whether it's specifically this, I mean, you can tweak around the edges, but this is basically based on the state guidelines that are implementing the law, so.
So as of July 1st, the city is no longer able to use LOS for its SEQA analysis. So the city could proceed on a project-by-project basis in implementing V M T, or it can adopt a comprehensive threshold and guidelines for use of future projects. It's a question of whether the city is doing this piecemeal or through this guidelines approach.
Does that answer your question? Yeah, the kind of the way I see it is, we got to do something, we might as well do this, with good consultant, with what appears good, and if we don't like it, we got to change it. Yeah, the developers have a path, what's expected of them, and they can come in, and it'll be, it'll be better than a piecemeal evaluation.
And to be honest, a lot of the, a lot of the day-to-day projects we get will be easily screened through this process. The smaller retail, the smaller office, infill residential, like we want to see in heart of Fairfield, they can be screened out fairly easily by these, by this approach.
Whereas previously, they might have triggered a higher level of analysis, so...
Potentially, yes.
Yeah, particularly the retail would definitely require a higher level of analysis.
Yeah. So any more questions? If not, do I have a motion? Commissioner Matthews?
I move that we adopt Resolution 2020-.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Feinstein, would you call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruzen?
Yes.
Commissioner Childs?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Matthews?
Yes.
Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Commissioner Cohen is absent, and Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Yeah, that is, that is complex. You could have made that presentation two hours, and nobody completely understands it, nobody was going to. So I appreciate that you gave us a good level of detail and background for the project, and then we just got to see how it goes. So, Item C, boarding house regulations update, zoning ordinance. So, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Boarding houses are formal housing which tenants share a residential unit. Typically, we've all seen them, they're in the past, they're in the present. Several people share a house, or even in some cases, an apartment unit. Typically, typically, they have a shared kitchen. Meals are not necessarily provided by the house owner, but it's just, it's an affordable way for providing workforce housing in the city. The current, our current definition, our current ordinance is basically three or more separate households, not individuals' households, with... separate households, not individuals' households, with their own individual agreements, payment agreements, rent, leases, et cetera, with the landlord or homeowner. Typical examples of boarding houses that you might have heard of on other terms or terminology, fraternity or sorority houses could be considered a boarding house, housing for migrant farm workers, some residential motels that don't meet our definition of single-room occupancy, which is very specific in our code. And in some cases, we have supportive and transitional housing programs where there's actually social service programs associated with several people living in a single residential unit. So those are some types of housing that could be defined as boarding houses. These are not, however, facilities licensed by the state. The state has its own separate category of housing units, residential care units, elder care units, et cetera, that have their own state licenses, in which we are basically somewhat forced to be hands-off on regulating. If you have a state license, local government regulations are very, very limited in what we can do. So boarding houses are not state-licensed facilities, I want to emphasize that. Where are they permitted currently? Through conditional use permit, primarily in our higher-density zones, RM, RH, RVH. They are not currently permitted in single-family zoning districts. Our standard RLM, RVL, RL zoning districts, you cannot operate a boarding house legally in the city of Fairfield. However, as we have all heard and we all know, informally or not, there are boarding houses that effectively operate throughout the city. They don't have business licenses, they don't have permits, they've not necessarily had inspections by our fire or police department, but they're out there and they're operating. And in their defense, they do provide, in some cases, housing for populations that would otherwise struggle to be housed. So, given that, our goal is to reconcile the need for an affordable housing type, which a boarding house is, and special-needs housing with neighborhood concerns, while legalizing and registering and getting a handle on where the unpermitted boarding houses are currently located in the city. Components, we are recommending an ordinance that distinguishes between small and large boarding houses. And it's basically three to six for the small, and seven or above for large. Defining appropriate zoning districts, we're recognizing that the smaller boarding houses might be appropriate for our single-family residential zones. If you have five people, four guys, four college kids, four people struggling after, from addictions, for example, it might be appropriate, it might fit within a residential neighborhood. Larger boarding houses should probably continue to be in the higher-density residential areas. Objective standards, including location and concentration, parking, and to a limited extent, design, we're not really allowed to do non-ministerial review of design. Ministerial process for approving the smaller home boarding houses and retaining the conditional use permit process for the larger boarding houses. As I mentioned, there are two classes we're recommending, large and small. I might point out that if you have one or two tenants that are sharing a house with you, that's not a boarding house, that's considered under state law and current practice as just a standard residential occupancy of an existing single-family home. So this is a three-and-above situation, basically. What are the requirements we're proposing? We're not necessarily reinventing the wheel, many of these are already in our code, but we're making them explicit in some cases. All life safety and building code requirements are going to be met. There will be an inspection, for example, by our fire department to ensure that the unit is safe, or the home is safe. We are adding in a new separation requirement, 300 feet, and cannot be located on the same block. This is a good standard that's already used for our state-licensed residential care homes and elder care homes, and so we just basically adapted it for our boarding house standards. Parking, one space per household unless a waiver is granted by the community development director. Parking is one of the issues that neighbors often complain about with these sub-rosa boarding houses. We want them to at least show at their initial application they have enough parking on the site. It can be street parking in front of the house, it can be in the existing garage, it can be in the driveway, but they at least have to have enough parking to support all the people that have a driver's license or a vehicle in, that are going to be living in the house. Now, if you're talking about a population that does not own a car, that does not drive, that does not have a driver's license, the community development director can issue a waiver for that initial boarding house application. Approval process, for the smaller homes, we're looking at ministerial. It's a zoning clearance. They have to come in, let us know that we're doing it, that they're doing it. We'll confirm that it's not within 300 feet of another boarding house. It'll confirm, we'll confirm that it meets all the other requirements. There's no other permitting requirement for these smaller homes through the zoning clearance process. For larger boarding houses, either zoning clearance or conditional use permit, depending on the specific location and zone. The conditional use permit is still, it's still a discretionary permit. It still allows us to look a little more in detail at the larger facilities in the city that might have neighborhood impacts that four people in a single-family home would not. These are all also going to be categorically exempt uses under SEQA. Our recommendation is to adopt the resolution recommending the city council approve the 2020 Boarding House Ordinance amendments that we're presenting tonight. And I can answer any questions.
Do any commissioners have questions? Commissioner Matthews?
Just to be clear, when you say three to six for the small, is that persons or households?
Households. So, for example, you could have three single mothers, not to pick on single mothers, with one kid, but it's households, which is how the current zoning ordinance actually operates as well, defines it as well.
And then, how is this impact? Does this have any impact on short-term web-based rental?
The, our city attorney's position on the web-based rental market is that it's considered transient occupancy, I mean, I should say transient lodging, and they're not permitted currently in the city of Fairfield.
Yeah, essentially, if you're thinking like an Airbnb or something like that, our current regulations do not facilitate that unless a hotel is allowed. Essentially, they fall under our hotel definition. The regulations that you'd be looking at tonight don't change that, so this, this particular ordinance does not allow or disallow those kinds of operations. They're completely independent of what we consider to be a boarding house. Boarding houses are actual residential, long-term, more-than-30-day kinds of occupancy.
I have two issues I want to address. Number one is, I mean, this is somebody who owns a house who rents it out by the room, like you do in some college towns, they'll rent it out, okay. This doesn't require that there be a person living there who is in charge, does it? Like a manager?
No, this does not require a manager. Now, for the larger facilities, seven, 10 households or people, the conditional use permit, we could potentially require that if we think there's going to be an issue with the operation of it. That's an operational type of issue that you could address through a conditional use permit process.
Yeah, I just go back, about 10 years ago, I did a ride-along, and they went to an illegal boarding house, and the police department told me that, we go to this, you know, this house has a bunch of calls for service all the time, the neighbors complain, and there's apparently nobody in charge. It seems to me like, if you're going to put this in a single-family neighborhood, maybe it should require that there be somebody living there that's manager, that's supposed to be responsible for the behavior of the people who are there. Call me old-fashioned, I don't know.
Well, and, I mean, that's a reasonable point. I mean, one could argue, though, that that's true of a standard family as well. There are families that cause, that true families, married couple and kids, that cause similar problems.
Yeah, yeah, you assume somebody's in charge.
Yeah. And to be honest, I mean, this is partly to facilitate some of our partners in the community that want to have four or five people that deed transitional housing, supportive housing. We can't legally accept them right now. We can't legally sign off on their funding agreements and everything. These groups, these organizations, will have somebody in charge typically living in the house.
Right, yeah.
So it's not necessarily a case of putting seven people coming out of jail with absolutely no management or anything like that. And one other thing I might point out, this also allows us, hopefully, to get a handle on where they are so that we can monitor things, monitor the situation, understand what's going on right now. I mean, we don't know where these are necessarily.
And another thing is, number of households versus number of persons. So you could possibly have a four-bedroom house and rent that out to eight people and people sharing a room. And there's nothing, under this ordinance, there's nothing that would stop that, correct?
So there's, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
There are still limits under the building code for occupancy that would...
Yes.
The households under the zoning typically looks at the number of lease arrangements.
The number of what?
Sorry about that. The number of lease arrangements.
Okay, and so would that be in the permit is like, okay, you're, you have, you have four bedrooms there, for the building code says you have, probably, what is it? Number of people per bedroom plus one or something like that? I don't know. I mean, I just think it's something that should be looked at, is making sure that there's a limit on the number of people in the permit that a landlord can, you know, you get an unscrupulous landlord, going to rent, share a room, eight, four-bedroom house to eight people, to me, that sounds like a neighborhood disturbance.
Well, on the one hand, it's going to be difficult if those eight people all have cars, because you're not going to be able to park eight people on a typical single-family lot. And as Casey mentioned, there's still health and safety codes that can be met and will have to be met, and, I mean, they can't, the house can't be operated in unsafe, unsanitary manner. And again, we'll have, we will have the ability to know where these units are, and it'll be far easier for us to enforce houses when we know who the owner is, we know who applied for the zoning clearance, et cetera, than it is currently where they just pop up willy-nilly with no, with no city knowledge.
And this is just a recommendation to the city council, correct?
Correct.
And they'll see, they'll see my comments when they look at this.
Yes.
Okay, okay, so I just wanted to mention it. Anything else? Then, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2020-16.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? So I have a motion and a second. Mr. Feinstein, can you call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruzen?
Aye.
Aye.
That was an aye, okay. Commissioner Childs?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Matthews?
Yes.
Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Commissioner Cohen is absent. And Commissioner Wood?
Aye.
I just want to add, I think that this is good to permit these things, I understand why you're doing it, but those are just concerns. Okay, so...
Sorry about that.
Mr. Chairman, I realize we didn't open the public hearing on this item, so...
Okay, well, I will recall the item and open the public hearing. I don't have any speaker cards, or do you have any?
I do not, so we'll need to have a fresh...
Do you want to redo the vote?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will open the public hearing, I will close the public hearing, and then, Commissioner Evans, would you make your motion again?
Before I make the motion, can I just comment that I agree about the number of persons versus the number of families in the house? I just want that to be on there for record, that that is a concern, even if, you know, because sometimes, depending on the program, everyone may not have a car, but there are people who have, you know, multiple children. It just really depends on the program. So if the city council is going to see the notes, then that is something that I would like to have looked at, too. But in the meantime, I move to approve Resolution Number, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2020-16.
Second, Commissioner Childs.
Okay.
Okay, with that, Mr. Feinstein, call the roll.
Okay. Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruzen?
Yes.
Commissioner Childs?
Affirmative.
Commissioner Matthews?
Yes.
Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Commissioner Cohen is absent. And Commissioner Wood?
Aye, yes.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, that is the end of our scheduled items. We go to information and communication, and the director's report and commissioner's comments. Mr. Feinstein?
Yeah, just one item, we will be coming back at your next meeting for a discussion and review of tiny home, potential tiny home standards. We'll discuss building heights, things like that, as Commissioner Wood asked for. We could have brought that to you tonight, but we felt that we had several sort of needy policy-related issues, and we figured we give your brain fresh space to look at tiny homes without having to deal with a lot of other meaty policy issues on the same meat. So we'll be bringing that to you at your next meeting.
Is that also a discussion of multifamily density and height restrictions? Or is that just the tiny homes?
The focus will be on tiny homes. If there's additional, just information you'd like us to bring on multifamily height, we can.
Yeah, that was my request, is that we take a look at all the regulations that are restricting density in multifamily, let's start with, and look at them. Are they appropriate in the housing shortage? Or do we need to take a look at them? I mean, as I recall, when we reviewed that, the multifamily project out at Sussin Valley Road by Interstate 80, you know, there was a height restriction, and we allowed something a little higher and so forth, and I asked why we have a height restriction. Well, the answer I got was, well, we just do. So what are the bases behind these restrictions?
We'll bring that back as a part of the discussion.
Yeah, so...
Yep, okay. And that's it.
That's it. Commissioners? Commissioner Matthews?
Sorry, Mr. Feinstein, you brought up a couple times in the presentation earlier, general plan. I know that that's been in the works. Can you give us a quick update on what you think the timing might be, and are there any budget kind of delays, that sort of thing?
Sure, yeah. So staff is reviewing potential consultants to assist the city with preparing our general plan. We're reviewing that right now. We expect that we will be bringing a contract to the city council to hire a consultant at their meeting just before Thanksgiving, and then in December, getting to work on that. We figure it will be about a two-year process, and there will be quite a bit of involvement with the Planning Commission. And one of your upcoming meetings here, before we bring the consultant under contract, I'll talk more about how we might see the Planning Commission.
Any other commissioners have questions or comments?
Yes, Commissioner Wesley has a comment. You mentioned, Commissioner Wood and Commissioner Evans, you both mentioned putting something on the record, and maybe this is more of a statement to Mr. Feinstein. You know, I've seen a lot of statements we've made over the last two and a half years I've been here. I never see any of that on the record. I see some brief notes saying someone made a motion to do this or that, but I've never seen the context of our debates or discussions or any narrative. Is there such a document? And are those considered minutes? And if so, how could I see that? In other words, how would the council know that Commissioner Wood said this, or Commissioner Evans said that? They won't know unless there's some of the documents I'm yet to see.
Yeah, so your minutes are what we call action minutes. They simply record the actions that are taken.
Indeed.
The archive of your comments, rather than being written, is on... The archive of your comments, rather than being written, is on video. We keep video of all that. With this item, though, because it's not, it's not done tonight, it goes to the city council, what we will do is we will note in the staff report that the commission expressed concern about, about that particular issue.
Got it. And that leads to my other point. Other than a video record, I would really like to have minutes, and it doesn't have to be everything, but we have one page, a page and a half, maybe, of minutes of all the discussion we have in a two-hour meeting. I would love to see in our minutes some of the content and context that the various commissioners expressed. Just thought I'd throw it out there, that that's a possibility. Since we do record this, it would be fairly easy to do a brief transcript to show what was said, instead of, you know, we voted and said yes, or said no.
Yeah, at one point, prior to having video, the city had much more detailed minutes at some cost to the city. We paid, we paid a person to actually do the more detailed transcript, but as city budgets have been cut back, and as we added video, we moved to a, to what we call an action minute method. Staff will look into that, and I'll get back to you at your next, at your next meeting with any additional comments on that for you guys to consider.
Excellent.
Do any other commissioners have comments? If not, we will adjourn to October 14th.
Okay.